Good morning. It is August twelfth, two thousand and twenty-five. I now like to call this meeting to order and ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Ms. Mary McKenna.
Good morning, Heavenly Father. We praise and thank you for this day. We thank you for all your glory. We thank you for the the sky, the trees, the birds, the fish, the people, each and every one of us. We ask your blessing on our community. We thank you ever so much for all the good and the blessings that we now have. And we are solidly engaged in knowing that you will have the best yet to come for us. We ask your blessing on this day, on this meeting, that we might make decisions with you in mind and with servants' hearts. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Ms. McKenna. We will move on to item three, motion. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes and pending ordinances and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion, sir.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Onto item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and address the council?
Number five.
Okay. If there is no one that would like to address the council, I will move and close citizen comments and move forward with number five, city announcements, city staff announcements, and city events. You know what, but how many days are we away from Orange, Toba?
Like fifty-three.
Fifty-three, all right. That's good. We're almost there. That wouldn't be good on a, on a grade, but we'll take it as far as our days. All right. Okay, so we will now move on to item six, proclamation. So this morning, we have a proclamation out of the office of the mayor. And so whereas the week of August third through ninth is nationally recognized as National Health Center Week, and whereas across the country, community health centers are recognized as a critical part of the universal healthcare system, and whereas throughout Texas, there are seventy-three health centers, and your local community health center, TEN, healthcare is one of those. TEN Healthcare is designed specifically to ensure low and no-income individuals and families have access to an accredited patient medical home. And whereas TEN Healthcare is celebrating their nine-year anniversary as a community health center in southeast Texas, since TEN Healthcare opened their doors in the City of Orange, they have served over six thousand residents and their families. And whereas during the most trying times the City of Orange has faced, such as hurricanes, ice storms, and COVID, they have rose to the occasion with extended hours for care, transportation services, and ensuring patients, patients do not go without critical medication. And whereas TEN Healthcare's compassionate care continues, as they offer the families the services that they need, including primary care service, behavioral health, medication assistance, pediatric services, transportation, and more, it is their mission to provide care to all. So now therefore, I, Larry Spears, Jr., Mayor of the City of Orange, do hereby proclaim the week of August third through the ninth as National Health Centers Week, August as Health Awareness Month, and Tuesday, August twelfth, as TEN Healthcare Day in the City of Orange, and ask all citizens to join me in encouraging women, men, and children to raise awareness, become informed, and get regular checkups. Congratulations. So congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So real quick, before we just take this picture, I do want to publicly recognize TEN and to say thank you on, on so many levels. Sometimes we get so caught up in the new things that are happening in our community that we forget how we got there. So for many years, being a council member and as mayor, we did not have a hospital. And all the times you'd see it on social media, people would say, "We don't have a hospital." TEN Healthcare was one of those places that came in and established themselves and gave all of our citizens a chance to get some type of help and have assistance. So thank you for helping us get through that storm. And even though we have a hospital, we still got TEN and its support all the way. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
You're supposed to hold.
Well, no, that is yours. You're in the middle.
Yeah. I'm in the middle.
Yeah.
I got it today.
They put the ugly down there.
All right. Ready, one, two, three.
All right, thank you again. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, now we move on to item seven, consent agenda. June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, Orange Economic Development Corporation meeting minutes. July first, two thousand and twenty-five, Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes. And July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. Onto item eight, A, first reading, consider an ordinance amending section ten point two one zero four, speed limits on certain highways of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, to regulate the speed on state-maintained Highway sixty-two in the City of Orange and Orange County, Texas, providing a penalty and repealing all other ordinances in conflict therewith. Mr. Jack?
Good morning, Council. This is the first of three readings that we'll do this morning in regards to speed limits within the city. The source was on State Highway sixty-two, northern portion of the city at the very extent of the extraterritorial jurisdiction. From the city limit, about half a mile south to the vicinity of Eight Gate Road, just north of Arabia Road. The southern, that northern section reduced from seventy-five miles an hour to sixty-five miles an hour in cooperation with the Texas Department of Transportation. Just south of that point, all the way down to FM ten seventy-eight and the railroad crossing, which is about nine and a half miles, a reduction from seventy miles an hour, seventy-five miles an hour, to seventy miles an hour. And again, this for the purposes of safety, health, and general public welfare.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Mr. Jack? Okay, if not, do I have a motion?
No.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jack. Eight B, consider an ordinance amending section ten point two one zero four, speed limits on certain highways of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, to regulate the speed on state-maintained FM thirty-two forty-seven in the City of Orange County, Texas, providing a penalty and repealing all other ordinances in conflict therewith. Mr. Jack?
Yes, sir. So this is for MLK Drive. Northern section is from Little Cypress Grove subdivision, around the bend down to just south of Adams Bayou. Speed reduction there from sixty-five miles an hour to sixty miles an hour. It's about two miles of roadway. Then from that, from that point, just south of Adams Bayou to just south of Interstate ten, Frontage Road, a reduction from fifty-five miles an hour to fifty miles an hour, a distance of about one mile. This is based on traffic studies that were done in February, and again, for the purposes of safety, health, and well-being of the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jack. Any questions or comments?
I just want to thank Adam for, for the hard work working with text to accomplish this. We appreciate that, especially along the MLK in this area.
I want to reiterate that I think the county destroyed this six or seven years ago. It was no success, and you pulled it off. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you for the comments. If, we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, one more. Eight C, consider an ordinance amending section ten point two two zero one, school zones designated of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, to regulate the designation of school zones on state-maintained Highway FM thirty-two forty-seven in the City of Orange, Orange County, Texas, providing a penalty and repealing all other ordinances in conflict therewith. Mr. Jack?
So this, as we were doing the FM thirty-two forty-seven, we realized there was no ordinance for the existing speed zone by the community church, which is just south of Adams Bayou down to Interstate ten. So this ordinance will establish that to a reduced speed limit of thirty-five during school hours.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Jack. Do we have any questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion?
Motion, sir.
Can we have a motion in a second? Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Jack. Item nine, A, consider a resolution approving an EDC infrastructure grant agreement with Todd Stark at the New Bayou Cafe located at twenty-two-ten Highway sixty-two, South Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-zero, in an amount not to exceed ninety thousand. Ms. Gravitt?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Mr. Todd Stark is the owner of Bayou Cafe. He currently has locations in Badger and in Beaumont, and he is expanding to the Orange area. He is leasing the former Sonic on Highway sixty-two, so he is going to repurpose this site. He is adding on to the current location to be able to have a sixty-seat dining area. So there's great progress going on at the site. We've previously brought this to you. We've met that sixty-day waiting period after the, the first motion, and now we have the agreement that's ready, subject to your approval. We will call Mr. Stark in to come in, sign off on the agreement.
Okay, any questions or comments? I know we talked about this in the EDC meeting, very excited. The, the property looks tremendously beautiful. And it's awesome that, to see an investment of ninety thousand transform in an area that it was bad off, I think, since the hurricane.
Mm-hmm.
And so now it looks way better, and it's a wonderful asset. So do I have a motion?
Motion, sir.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gravitt. Onto item nine, B, consider a resolution of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Old Orange Cafe for disaster-related catering services for the city employees and approved support personnel. Mr. Smith?
Morning, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this is resolution is approve a one-year agreement with Old Orange Cafe for disaster catering services. We selected them after the RFP process last year. They provided excellent service to the city in past events, most recently Hurricane Laura. They ensure our employees have reliable meals during the disaster, and this contract ensures we have a dependable local vendor ready if the need arises.
Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any questions or comments? This is one of those things where we hate to have to be prepared like we do, but we do it. And so to make sure that we have everybody taken care of is, is a wonderful thing. So thank you, Mr. Smith. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. Salter? Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Onto item nine, C, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Alco LLC for four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for the bid twenty-two-five dash twenty-five, Eleventh and Burton Lift Station, White Oak Pumps Replacement Project. Mr. Jack?
Yes, earlier this year, during the storms, two of the pumps in this lift station were damaged, both by debris and lightning. This contract will replace those pumps in place. It will be covered by insurance claim. We received two bids on this project. Staff recommends award to Alco Incorporated out of Beaumont, Texas. Who's done quite a bit of work for us here within the city. Their bid was four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jack. Any questions or comments? All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jack. This is definitely one of the infrastructure projects where a lot of times people ask, "Are we getting it done?" But once it goes in underground, you don't see it anymore. But definitely happy to get that done. Item nine, D, consider a resolution of the city council of the City of Orange, Texas, authorizing updating the comprehensive master plan that was adopted in nineteen ninety-six and amended in nineteen ninety-nine, and providing an effective date. Mr. Knopf?
This is a resolution that would start the updating process for the comprehensive master plan. The Planning and Consulting Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Knopf?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Does understanding that there's a grant available for...
I'm sorry.
Does understanding that there's a grant available for...
Yes, the city has received a grant to do this.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Knopf, for working to make sure that that happened. We appreciate it. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Knopf. Onto item ten, A, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC concerning the withdrawal of a one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred dollar EDC incentive from Cole Commercial Holdings, Cole Haven Residences, at sixteen eighty-fourteenth Street, Orange, Texas, due to a request from project owner, Mr. Chris Cole. Ms. Gravitt?
Mr. Chris Cole has reached out to staff and has requested to withdraw his previously approved incentive for his project. Cole Commercial Holdings, Cole Haven Residences is what it was being called. So he said, "Due to construction costs, currently market conditions, and the, just the high interest rates, they have decided to table this project for the time being, but Mr. Cole did express that they are interested in doing projects in the City of Orange, so he does hope to keep in contact and come back at a later date to discuss projects."
Okay. All right, any questions or comments? I know it was discussed earlier in the EDC meeting, so do we have a motion?
Motion. Sir.
We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Gravitt.
Thank you.
Item ten, B, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion of intent approving EDC funding to repair a portion of Gloria Drive in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand for the purpose of economic development. Mr. Trahan?
Yes, so Mayor and Council, this was discussed at the EDC meeting prior to the council meeting. This is a project that the EDC staff is working on with Adam Jack and the Public Works Department. And as it stated in the caption, it is a repair primarily at the apron into Gloria Drive in support of the Discount Tire Project. So it goes to you as a council for approval and support of this particular action item after the EDC formally approved it as well. So I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, any questions or comments from Council?
Ju- just a quick comment to make sure I mentioned it earlier to say that this does not replace anything we're doing with White Oak Road, that drive, that is totally separate. This is an EDC incentive
Right.
for that particular piece.
And the qualifier is in support of Discount Tire, which is a retail project.
Right.
Okay.
We are, we are continuing with that process.
Right.
Okay. All right, we have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter? Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Trahan. Item ten, C, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six proposed budget for the City of Orange. Ms. Zito?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
So all the departments have put in their requests. Staff has put together a proposed budget for your review. I've given them to you already. This motion is just to acknowledge receipt. This will give you all a week, because we have a workshop next week, to give you a week to review, ask questions, come by the office, whatever, so we can be prepared to discuss next week.
Okay, all proposals are denied. No, I'm just, I'm just checking. I'm just trying to break the ice in the room. Everybody gets, look, when the, when the tax books come out, we're just having fun. Okay, we have, we have a motion to accept receipt.
Motion. Sir.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. I know you're gonna be here for a while. Item ten, D, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the certification of the twenty-twenty-five anticipated collection rate and twenty-twenty-four excess debt collection. Ms. Zito?
Good morning. So we're going to, since we have some new council members, I thought we, I might change up my presentation. From last year, usually I just discuss it. I thought maybe some visuals might be helpful. Okay, so let's try. So the first thing we get from the tax assessor collector is this. It's, she, she calculates our, our anticipated collection rate, which is ninety-nine point eight-seven. She expects that we will receive that percentage of collections, and she's determined that we did not have an excess. We had a shortage last year on our debt service fund. So that, these, these figures right here go into our tax rate calculation. So this piece of paper is important. And since how we had a deficit for our debt service collections, it increased our debt rate this year to try to make up for it. So just wanted to show you that. She sends all this stuff, but it is important. It goes into our tax rate calculation. So our first motion is to accept this certification.
Okay. Thank you for sharing that. I know when we last spoke about the budget, we were waiting to see her numbers.
Okay, so we're gonna need a motion to accept this.
Make a motion.
Okay. Okay, I think we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And so real quick, before we move on from this one, it had to be adjusted because of the debt, like the loss from last year.
Mm-hmm.
And so those are the kind of things I'm thankful that you're sharing. When people ask us, like, "Why did this happen?" It's not, we didn't, we're not doing this to you. Neither is the county.
No.
It's when taxpayers aren't paying their property taxes, and then somebody has to, it, it goes on everybody else. So thank you for sharing that. We will go to item ten, E, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the twenty-twenty-five certified appraised values and the corresponding reports from the Orange County Appraisal District. Ms. Zito?
So the start of the process is the appraisal district appraises everyone's properties. They calculate all that, and they give us this form, along with all their backup. But I wanted to point out that the, the, the values that they give us, I've set, put several years here. So the first year in red is the shares. And you can see that it is the total market value and the total taxable value is the taxable value, the market value, all the properties and city limits. You can see that it's less than last year. And if you remember in years past, I always tell you that there's an inverse relationship between our values and our tax rate. So I'm gonna show you that in a minute, but I just wanted to point that out. In twenty-two, say the taxable value is one point two. Twenty-three, it went up, one point four. Twenty-four, it went down slightly. In twenty-five, it's down one point three. So I'm gonna show you that it's not the, I'm gonna, I have, I found the reason for that. So I just want to show you that. The tax ceiling is our frozen counts for people over sixty-five, disabled. I just wanted to show you that has been increasing. We have more aging population. We've given more incentives to them. We increased their exemption. And our average market, homestead value, our average taxable homestead value has increased steadily over the years. So everybody's home should be, have a little bit more value. It looks good for our city to have our average homestead values increase every year. So there's that. So here's the reason why I believe our taxable value in total went down. This, the, the appraisal district always prepares this top taxpayers' report. It's in the back of their, their report. It's in your packet. But I put it, I compared it to last year so that you could see. Inland Orange, which is international paper, which now is sold to USG Paper, they sold. Well, USG is not operational. It's in a phase to decide what they're gonna do. There's no operations going on. So you can see that they were devalued by a hundred and twenty-seven million dollars. That's a big hit on our taxable base, right? And also, the property tax abatement for the hospital has kicked in. That's nineteen million. And also Conrad Shipyard, they had a devaluation. I don't know why. They, maybe their operations are less. They went down three million. Those types of things made our entire taxable base went down. But those amounts are more than what our base went down. So overall, the city, I want to just make sure we understand, our residential, our commercial, our city is growing. Right now, it looks like we're not, because our values went down, but that's the reason. These couple of companies affected our value. But overall, we need to project that our city is growing. Our values are stable or there. This is, the city can't, has no control over what, you know, if a company sells and retools and it's
Yes, ma'am.
it has to build back up.
Right.
Eventually, USG, if they get going, and they, that value will come back. But I just wanted to point out that
Yes, ma'am.
our, our overall city, we're growing. Our value would have increased without that. So there's the values. So we're gonna need, our next motion is to accept that report from the appraisal district.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments from Ms. Zito?
I want to just say thank you so much for explaining all that to us and making, you know, because I'm sure they get this well, lots of calls about the property tax one of it.
Right.
Because they don't really understand. So thank you, Grandma, for explaining.
The thing is, is transparency is always the best, and so when the public wants to see what we're dealing with, thank you for sharing it. And I know it's one of those things where even though they dropped, we're still thankful that there's something. Because when, when we all got those text messages and phone calls a few years ago about Invista and NIP, it was devastating. But at least we still have something, so we're thankful.
That's right. And now, you know, as USG retools and starts to have production, we expect that to come back.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, so would we have a motion to accept receipt or acknowledge receipt?
Motion.
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
And Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you. I think we're on ten. Is it E, Ms. Anderson?
F.
F, I'm sorry, thank you. When we had books, I used to be able to cross that out. I can't cross out on my computer screen. Ten F, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the statement of twenty-twenty-five tax rates and the corresponding worksheets from the Orange County Tax Assessor Collector. Ms. Zito?
So our tax assessor collector will take all the information that we've already shared, plus I'm sure a lot of other things, and she calculates our tax rates, our no new revenue rate, and our voter approval rate, our de minimis rate, and our debt rate. She provides us with that. So I wanted to compare that for you for other, to other years. And you can see that the, say the no new revenue rate. Remember, the no new revenue rate is the rate that we calculate that will equate to the same revenue, basically, that you got the prior year. So that means literally no new revenue. If you adopt that rate, that's what you get. You get the same what you got last year. There's no increase. There's no room for inflation. There's nothing. So, but you can see that it goes up this year. See that? In red is this year. And remember, I just showed you the slide a while ago. Our values are down. Our rates are up.
Yeah.
We have no control over that. The city is not trying to raise rates to get more money, not trying to raise rates to hurt our taxpayers. It is the way the calculations work. We have, it is what it is. Like, that is our calculation. So I wanted to bring that to your attention. And we have proposed, city manager has proposed an adopted tax rate, just barely over that no new revenue. It's not even anywhere near the voter approval rate, which is the highest rate you can go without an election. At, he proposes point eight-eight-eight. So I just wanted to point that out. And I wanted to just show you how that inverse relationship works. This is a very simplified version of the calculation of that no new revenue rate. Scenario number one would say, let's just say our prior, our prior year levy was five million. Meaning the levy is the revenue, our last year revenue, five million. And our current year taxable property values were a million. Let's just say they're same as last year, a billion. It calculates to be a no new revenue rate of point five. But if your right, if your property values went up, and I put just one point four billion in there, you can see that that new new revenue rate went down. But like this year, when our taxable property values in the scenario number three, the last column, went down, say I just used eight hundred thousand, million, then the rate goes up. That's the way the calculation works. I just thought maybe if I pointed it out a little better, it might be more helpful. So that's how that relationship works. The city is not raising rates just to raise rates. Our rate was calculated to go up. Like, we don't have a choice. Like, that is our calculated rate. And if we go below the no new revenue, we're losing, we have less revenue than last year. I mean, we still have bills to pay. Our insurance has gone up. Our health insurance went up fifteen percent. Our property and liability insurance went up like ten percent. We have expenses and there's inflation, so that's why we proposed the point eight-eight. Just a little bit more than the no new revenue. So I also calculated, I showed the rates. And if the top line says total taxable value, so I pulled that from those years so that you can see as that, from twenty-two to twenty-five, as that rate, that taxable value either went up or down, you can see the, the no new revenue rate correspondingly went the other direction. And even though our, our proposed rate is more than our tax rate last year, that is still not, it's not that, I just wanna reiterate, this city is not just raising rates just to raise them. Like, we're not getting that much money at all. It's because of our values went down. I think I have one more. Yeah. So I calculated the revenue from this. Just so you can see the revenue generated on the various rates. The proposed rate is in red. The no new revenue rate is the very first column. The difference between those two is only four hundred thousand in total. But in property tax alone is only two hundred thousand. And from IDC revenue would be another two hundred thousand. So two hundred thousand from property tax revenue, an increase from year to year, that's not a lot of increase. That didn't even cover our insurance increase. So we have been very conservative with our proposed rate. City manager has been very conservative with our proposed rate this year. And I just wanna point out that the rate is, is higher than last year. But I wanted to show you the reasons why. Does, hope that helps. If you have any questions whatsoever, I'd be happy to help.
So this is the point. I'm gonna jump in and look at the camera and say, if you were watching this on YouTube, rewind twenty times and listen to this again, because this has been a remarkable presentation. Thank you. Thank you. And so even at the end of the day, with Mike's suggestion, to see that it is only an extra four hundred thousand with a city that had a budget last year of twenty-seven million, you're not, we're not fixing to be riding around in new vehicles and things of that nature. We're just trying to make it. Just like everybody else is at home right now. We're just trying to make it. So thank you for that presentation. Any questions and comments from Ms. Zito?
Okay, we have to have a motion to accept those.
Yes, ma'am. I'm scrolling down. I'm just still excited and thankful that you said it the way you did. 'Cause I love when you said it's not, even if we did the no new revenue, that's not even enough room to adjust for the inflation that everybody is seeing across the world. So thank you for that. Do we have a motion to accept or acknowledge receipt?
Make a motion.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. McKenna, Ms. Salter, Mr. Childs. Okay, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Mortimer, Mr. Birch. Okay, all right. So we have, um, one, two, three, four, and then two. So it still passes. Okay. On to item ten G. Discussion and possible action on the tax rate. If proposed tax rate will exceed the no new revenue tax rate, take record vote and schedule a public hearing. The notice of public hearing on tax increase for the city of Orange, Texas will be published and posted per the requirements of the Texas Property Tax Code, sections twenty-six point zero five and twenty-six point zero six. Mr. Coons.
Mayor Council, again, what we're gonna do, and I think each one of you have the exact verbiage of the motion that would be required to be read, second, the motion second voted on. But this would, this would set the max tax rate. You're not adopting the tax rate today. We'll do that later in the budget process. So this would be the maximum that could be set.
Okay. So once again, this is the maximum that it can be set, but not the actual number at this time. All right? So do I have someone that is willing to read the motion that was handed to us? These right here. If somebody wants to make a motion, you'll have to read it as stated. Okay, nobody wants to? Okay.
I'm going to that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point eight-eight-eight-zero-zero-zero per one hundred dollars, which is effectively a two point two-three percent increase in the tax rate in scheduling of a public hearing on Tuesday, September second, twenty-twenty-five, at five-thirty P M.
Okay, so we have a motion. Then do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. And then we will have to take a roll call vote. So Ms. McKenna? Mr. Childs? Mr. Mortimer? Mr. Birch? Mr. Chandler? Okay, Ms. Salter? Okay, all right. All right, with that being said, that motion passes. Sorry, my screen keeps going. All right, on to city manager report. Mr. Coons.
Just a reminder, Mayor Council, that we will have a special call meeting next Tuesday here in the council chambers. It'll be at five-thirty. It's gonna be a budget workshop on the proposed value.
Okay, all right. City Council report. Ms. McKenna.
Uh, just wanna thank everybody for coming and tell everybody to break back to school. I appreciate everybody driving safely and getting those kids there and having a great school year.
Mr. Childs? Okay, Mr. Mortimer?
Uh, no report, but if my wife is watching, happy birthday, baby.
All right, happy birthday. Happy birthday. All right, Mr. Birch.
I wanna thank her for doing, going all out and breaking this down for us. But this is a necessity. It has to happen. And thank you.
Mr. Chandler? Okay, Ms. Salter?
Uh, just wanna thank everybody. Thank you again, Ms. Zito. It was a great presentation. And have a great, great week, uh, for Tan.
Okay, once again, congratulations to Tan. Congratulations for, for all that you've done and the awesome work you've provided our community. I wanna thank Ms. Zito for the presentation. Thanks for all the staff for their presentations and bringing all this to us. Two things I wanted to ask about, uh, real quick in public, so we can make sure it's talked about later, is when we do events at the city, and we might already do it, but I just wanna make sure, like if we do, I'm just gonna say it 'cause it's the next one, Orange Tober. Like, any city of Orange employee, like our, the guys that change out the trash bags, do all of the work, let's try to put it in our budget to where they always receive a meal. I know they work all day long. So let's try to make sure and incorporate that the city workers receive like a coupon. I know we've done it before, but a coupon or something where they get to go get a meal from one of the food vendors, um, 'cause they do such a wonderful job. And I also wanted to ask, uh, this question might be for, is for Mr. Coons, and I guess and Mr. Jack as well. As I'm going to work in the morning, uh, going down through our Cove area, school is fixing to start back tomorrow, and there's several areas where the West Orange School District's bus stops have their children like literally right there at the end of those roads and from the Cove neighborhoods. I would like to see how, if I need to go down there and speak with them, to find a way to, uh, maybe establish a well-lit or a better spot for these children to meet at. Because what's happening is a lot of these people who are going to the new chemical plant that are, or headed to the old chemical plants, they are, they are driving, and these children are literally like five feet from the road. And so if somebody was texting or spilled a drink and lost control, I'd just like to see if we could find a way to work with them to ensure the safety of our children. So, um, thank you for that. And with that being said, we will adjourn to close executive session. Deliberation with city attorney pursuant to chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. We got several of them. One is the collective bargaining agreement between International Association of Firefighters, Local Number One-Four-Three-Two. Negotiation with Orange Municipal Police Association. We also have regarding pending litigation of State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company as Sabraji of Janelle Ellison plaintiff versus City of Orange defendant. And personal matters regarding the annual evaluation of the city manager at this time. We ask that you please step outside, and we will reconvene in open session once done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm mistaken, there is no actions we taking for 12A1, 12A2, 12A3 and 4, right? Because we're gonna let them finish paperwork.
We can, okay, I'm sorry, I thought we wanted to wait, I thought you said something about finishing out a few things on the details. They just had question.
Okay, so the action item for 12A2, do we have a motion to approve the...
Just be your 26th, by the party agreement.
Agreement with municipal police association, do I have a motion?
Motion.
And we have a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, there is nothing on 12A3 or 12A4, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.